To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There was no action to report on the closed session, however, there is a statement from me to be read into the record. As I announced prior to closed session, item 4A of the agenda was pulled. This decision was made earlier this afternoon for the following reasons. The district recently received a letter from a lawyer representing board member Perry, threatening litigation that would seek monetary damages for Ms. Perry, and asking to meet and confer about the claims. Item 4A on the closed session agenda was intended to allow the board to discuss with legal counsel the claims made by Ms. Perry's lawyer and her meeting for a request. Legal opinions from the California Attorney General and the Fair Political Practices Commission confirm that when a member of a board or counsel is also a claimant or plaintiff in litigation seeking damages against the entity that employs them, that member has a conflict of interest and cannot participate in decisions related to the claim or litigation. Also, an entity cannot maintain attorney-client privilege if it confers its legal counsel and the individual threatening to sue the entity is part of the conversation. Over the past few days, I have asked member Perry several times whether she intends to recuse herself in discussion and deliberation on item 4A. She refused to confirm that she will recuse herself and has indicated that she does not intend to do so. Rather than expend legal fees for the attendance at district council, this afternoon I informed him that he did not need to attend. I also asked him, based on the authority of the board president under Board Bylaw 9124, to confer with member Perry's counsel to see if an agreement can be reached regarding member Perry's involvement in confidential discussions related to litigation she has threatened against the district. Motion, please, to adopt our agenda.
A second?
Carol, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
No.
All those in favor of the agenda as presented?
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's five oh. We have no recommendations tonight, so we move to public comments on non-agenda items. If you wish to comment on non-agenda items, you need to fill out a card if you're on the table out there. And reiterating our instructions that are in the, out in the lobby, it is also on the podium, when you have the podium, to see that you have three minutes to speak. And please pay attention to the timer up here and to be cognizant of using your time and not needing to be asked to stop so that others can have time to speak. Pauline Staudt.
Thank you, President Vickers and board members. My name is Pauline Staudt. I am the program supervisor of the Alcohol and Drug Education Prevention Team, also known as ADEPT, within the healthcare agency of the county of Orange. There are shared goals between the newly approved District's Local Control and Accountability Plan and the County of Orange Alcohol and Other Drug Prevention Strategic Plan in supporting healthy families and healthy children, which in turn support the academic achievements of your students. Our services can contribute to the achievement of the district's LCAP goals, such as providing opportunities for parents, students, staff, and the community to strengthen communication and meaningful participation. Our services can also contribute to the goals and objectives of the district's drug- and alcohol-free school policy, the social and emotional learning standards that increase protective factors and decrease risk factors, the wellness policy, and the individual school's objectives to help students develop an understanding and appreciation of their value system and the importance of maintaining a healthy drug-free lifestyle. Additionally, we recognize the value of California's health education content standards for alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. Our services are evidence-informed, designed to provide effective primary prevention of alcohol and other drug use among youth from elementary to high school. These workshops build character, increase schools' connectedness, and provide opportunities to develop effective decision-making skills, conflict resolution, and resiliency. Additionally, we have workshops for parents that provide strategies to promote healthy lifestyle choices for their children and encourage engagement in their families and with their schools. Strategies include communication skills, teaching refusal skills, techniques to avoid peer pressure, and increase self-confidence. ADEPT would love the opportunity to partner the district's students, families, and staff, and community if you feel our services are a good match to achieve your goals and objectives. Thank you.
Michelle Monda.
I'm thoroughly, thoroughly disgusted as a taxpayer with you guys. You forced the issue where we now get to spend how many more thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars to represent, to fight a lawsuit that you forced Ms. Perry into because you wouldn't play by your own rules and you have this cockamamie idea that it's okay, in my belief, to go against the Brown Act and create a subcommittee for one. I have a column, and this is my column that I wrote, I'm sure you all read it, called "Common Sense." In this column, I am more than upset over the fact that not only have you hired a lawyer who, you should have done some background checking on him, but not only have you hired a lawyer who got into the same situation and was subsequently let go because of that same situation that you are now imposing on Ms. Perry, but we are now getting to spend how many thousands with his firm? So you are actually rewarding this bad behavior. That's outrageous. That's my money you guys are spending. Secondly, and this is the more egregious part of what my column is about, the apparent collusion between Valoria and Normandin. Now, it seems to me when Ms. Perry writes an email to Valoria and copies Vickers, that that's who it should go to, but Valoria decided, oh no, I need to go and check it off with Ms. Normandin because I need to get her opinion on what I should say to reply back. She replies back, and that's exactly verbatim the reply that Ms. Perry gets to a confidential email that she sent to Valoria and copied Vickers. Were you even aware that it was forwarded on to Normandin? Probably not, and I'll bet the rest of the board runs. So how interesting is that? Here you're claiming she did something, but this is so incredibly outrageous to me that you would... To me, that's confidential. I mean, that is not open communication. The other thing I'm really excited about is this little shiny piece of confection. I laughed hysterically at one of the board members who thought this was just the best thing since sliced bread because it was telling all the wonderful things that you guys do. Well, you know what? How much did this thing cost? I'll bet if you put the money that this slick little piece, and by the way, I do have a problem with it being bilingual, how many, I'd like to know how many Spanish speakers we actually have here. And oh, by the way, this is America. We should be teaching them to speak English if we want them to be successful here. But oh no, you guys need to be politically correct and include a couple of articles translated in this, how clever, how inclusive, how diverse. But I depress. What I'm upset about with this is how much money this thing cost, and you guys can't pony up the six, Ms. Norman, and I'd appreciate it if I had your attention.
Your time is up, please.
Spend the money on recording the school board sessions.
Karen Nelson.
Hi, I just wanted to come speak on behalf of a lot of people in Laguna Beach, included. In a country where there's so much division and there's so much ranker and volatility that I think this is so unnecessary. I know Dee is a person and I've dealt with her in terms of her, how she honors the kids at the school and how much she cares about them. And we just soup all of you and all of us in the community. If we could be treating her with the honor and respect that she deserves. And so I ask out of you, as fellow human beings, that we would treat her like the professional that she is and think about how much she's given to the kids of Laguna Beach and continues to do so. So just take a moment and maybe if we could each go off our vitriolic side and understand that there's a lot of people involved here. And this is a really good person that has done a ton for kids and wants to continue to do so. So I ask for some humanity in the room. Thank you.
Debbie Bowes.
I just have trouble with my height. Hi, I'm Dr. Debbie Bowes. I've been a school board member in the San Marino Unified District for eight years, assistant superintendent in South Valley, a director of education. And I give you this rundown because I think you have a right to know who's speaking before you. I had stated service responsibilities for school improvement over 800 students, over 65 schools. And in my entire career, and I might look a little sugary that I have, which is 50 years, I'm in the education, starting at a very young age. I will tell you, I've never seen such behavior as this school board. Starting off with Vickers and Normandin, there is no excuse for publicly ridiculing a board member. And in my 50 years of going to the districts that I belong to, I have never seen board members ridicule other board members publicly. Get your game together. If you have issues, policy issues, go to that. I was one of the implementers, unfortunately or fortunately, of bilingual education in Alhambra. It was one of the most controversial programs in the state of California. And I had to buffer between the different factions in order to bring a consensus. And that could be done with skilled leadership. You've let this superintendent get way out of control. The minute that this was starting to bubble up, consultants from the county should have been brought in. There's no reason for this. These are reasonable people, I think. I don't know Dee Perry, so I'm not speaking about her friend. I'm speaking about what I've read and what I'm hearing about. This board needs to remember, she was threatened with litigation. She has every right, Lee Howard Hill's very well documented legal excerpt in the paper will tell you what ground she stands on, and she will win. If she sues, she will win because she has the right to get assistance if she's being threatened with litigation. I don't know where in the hell this idea of excluding somebody came from, but it's a very bad idea. You're excluding a second elected, most elected person, somebody the community supports, not one letter of support for the superintendent, for Breezy, or for you in the newspaper. Nobody. And they passed over her. Well, you should have because Vickers could do the great job. Hey, let's take a good look at the job Vickers has done. I've never seen more turmoil. So maybe the decision to skip over Perry wasn't the right decision. And these closed sessions before today. You may think you're right, but you don't have the experience I do. You haven't been in the districts I've been in. You haven't had the positions...
I'm ready, please.
Just one moment, I'll finish my sentence. You have not had the positions I've had, and I'm telling you, you are way off at this.
Christopher Kling.
My name is Christopher Kling. At the March 26th School Board Meeting, I spoke out on parent and even student experience creating fear of school district retaliation for challenging school board policy. I am told a board member would ask, who is this guy Christopher Kling? Well, the answer is that I'm a resident, taxpayer, and voter. Apparently, that's not good enough for board member Vickers. For example, Vickers officiously quizzed board member Perry on the pedigree of constituents disturbed by video and even audio total blackout of the December 18 meeting. That's when the board unlawfully suspended compliance with its own bylaw and rotation of members to serve as president. Go to LBUSD website video archive for January 15 at 2:08 and 28 seconds, and hear Vickers demand Perry disclose demographic and social data on constituents. What follows on that video is disparagement of Perry's right to represent her constituents by the superintendent and board based on fake protocols that have no validity. Excuse me, constituents aren't accountable to the board for how we fit into biases about who and what really matters. But if we're talking about credibility, board member Vickers was not elected according to her own past interpretation of the rotation bylaw. Since the board repealed the bylaw after illegitimately installing Vickers as president, shouldn't the board hold a new election under the new bylaw? And of course, everyone knows the superintendent admitted in writing before the February 22 meeting his intention to end livestream podcasts of meetings to suppress transparency on controversial board actions. Going dark is a good metaphor for this superintendent and board. Last meeting, we even heard board member Vickers refer to criticisms as attacks. Yet she has accused board members of lies when it turned out that they were telling the truth and she was not. Since when is a disagreement an attack instead of democracy in action? There are school boards and city councils all over the state of California broadcasting meetings without closed captioning for disabled members of public, and that needs to be corrected. But blacking out meetings because there is robust debate does not help disabled citizens. It just suppresses open debate. In contrast, our city council even displays agenda item numbers on live podcasts so busy parents can decide whether to come participate. I know who I am and why I speak out at the board meetings. I support Dee Perry. She should be president, and the board's rogue dark committee scam is going to fail. What I wonder is who the board members think they are and what they think they are doing.
Sheri Morgan.
This is so fun. Hi, Sheri Morgan. Mr. Valoria, in an email to me dated June 19th, you wanted to reach out and see if I was interested in sitting down and chatting with you based on sensing that I recently had concerns and wanted to offer an opportunity for us to connect. My response was that I've been pretty transparent as to where I stand, both in the complimentary and critically, in an effort to eliminate ambiguity. We met June 24th at the Barrow outside and discussed, despite the fact people said I should not meet with you individually, discussed a variety of topics from the calendar, bell schedule, writing of the bylaws and policy, and the role the superintendent plays in that. We discussed parenting challenges, and I asked you what you saw for your five-year plan. You indicated you wanted to see your children graduate from Laguna Beach High School, your house being in escrow. We discussed that process and some of the reasons behind it, for which you mentioned the challenges it was to live in a town which you're employed and how it affected you and your entire family. Today, it came to my intention almost a month later that a part of that conversation, Mr. Valoria, was shared between you and board member Normandin. But it was twisted and misrepresented to state that I had made specific comments regarding a specific student and their participation in free speech, and that I insisted that they should be removed from their free speech opportunities. There is nothing further from the truth. The conversation in question referred to the optics from an author or speaker, the events or topics they may be writing about, and the dynamics of the relationship of the author, the people, or players, and the subjects being written or spoken about. I believe it's called a conflict of interest, and in the political or journalism world, that conflict can allow some to believe that there's coercion or bias injected in the opinion of the writer or speaker depending on the situation. Board member Normandin has added their own layer of false accusations stating that I might have shared additional private conversations about some student, when in actuality it was probably infused with a mother-to-mother conversation that I may have been having with her. This is really concerning. The timing quite suspicious. We met almost a month ago, and the fact that today I got a call that there is a falsified story about me that generates concern? Is someone hoping for an email that I can curtail myself? It appears there's a pattern amongst our leadership. The same manipulation of conversation that board member Perry experienced is being used to target me and misrepresent my words. I am being falsely accused, and my reputation is attempted to be slandered, not to mention a concern was being expressed to me through a fourth person. Not direct, but if there's genuine concern, why didn't you take the time to talk to me? You took the time to ask for a meeting with me. So did board member Wolf, but she never followed up on it. I received texts or emails from everyone on the board with the exception of board member Kelly, and emails from most of the administration, so why not today? If there's concern, call me direct. If these comments have been misconstrued through a simple and small group of people, what would happen on the larger scale? Why are you the board allowing the superintendent to politicize his position and vet each of you against each other? Why are you violating the rights of a board member and the citizens of Laguna Beach? The school board shouldn't be a political agenda, and this isn't about Dee Perry. I would defend each and every one of you. I would defend each and every one of you. It's not hashtag stand with Dee Perry, it's hashtag stand for our rights. What is wrong with you guys?
Jennifer...
It's Kenair. Kenair.
Kenair, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Kenair, and I live right near Laguna Beach. I have two children, one that just graduated and one that's going to start in the high school. I've known Dee Perry for several years, and I'm here supporting her. I can't believe what's going on with the board. I can't believe the way you guys have been rededicating the laws and keeping her out. I have to tell you, she loves the children of Laguna Beach. Absolutely loves the children and was instrumental in helping me with my son recently. And it saddens me that you're excluding her voice because it makes me think that you don't care about the children as much as she does. And I really wish that you guys would allow her to become president and not make your own rules. And I support Dee Perry. She's an amazing woman. Thank you.
Indiana Hines.
Hi, I'm Indiana Hines. So I obviously support Dee Perry. The whole thing is so incredibly upsetting. It's corruption. Just, people wouldn't believe it. In a different town, you say about what goes on in Laguna Beach, and if you discuss the situation, it's really kind of incredulous, really. I don't understand how she didn't have her term to be president. How, you guys, you know, there's a game, there are rules, and you change the game so that you can have your way. I don't know anyone else besides Dee that is pro children. I mean, everybody talks about all this political stuff, but no one talks about the kids except for Dee. So what does that tell you? That tells you there is something really wrong here. It'd be great, I don't know how many of you there are, but I wish that were, all of them were like Dee. That's what would be good for the children. This is for the kids. And there's just nothing about the kids here. So, I mean, I'm tired of the corruption because that's what it smells of that. It's, there's so much corruption, and it would just be nice to have a healthy city and a healthy environment for our kids and correct rules. I mean, if you guys don't follow rules, why would the kids have to follow any? I mean, what you're teaching the children is awful. So I really hope things change. I hope it turns around that she gets what she should get, which is president. I think this current president needs to go. And I think was kicked off once before, which I don't understand how in the world she came back. So I don't understand how politicians, because that's what it sounds like, are kicked off and then somehow, like a year or two later, come back. It's, it's, it's...
Is there a first, I'm not sure the pronunciation, the first name and last name is Fazio?
I'm Trey Fazio. I have a child in the district. I don't know Ms. Perry. I have a problem with the school calendar. I have a problem with the bell schedules, and I really have a problem with all of you deciding you're going to change the bylaws and bypass a member of the board for president. You also form a secret committee that she can't be a part of. Who does that? Because she might tell some confidential attorney-client privilege information in the future. Even a suspected terrorist don't get put in jail because they might do something in the future. That's ridiculous. It violates the Brown Act. I don't think you should stand for it. A pox on all your houses.
Here, Kenair. Jennifer Zider.
Got a lot to say, but first, all both must count and stop the retaliation against Dee Perry. Hi Dee, how you doing? Thank you, there. Okay, so what you are doing with Dee Perry is wrong. I'm thrilled that she has chosen to take action against this school board and each one of you board members. I hope she succeeds, and I hope she succeeds and gets substantial punitive damages, most in the nature of defamation and violation of her duties. And more importantly, I hope that each of you individual board members who took action, including the superintendent, to cause this harm to Dee Perry are suited in your individual capacities...
Yes.
So that the indemnification hopefully will get kicked out, and each one of you will have to bear the consequences of your actions with your own mind. I'll look at the DNO insurance when I have a chance, I'll do a PRA on that, but I hope that's the case because you deserve to be held responsible for your individual actions. Okay, that's number one. I speak a lot of city council meetings. I came to the June 25th meeting, right? Right here for the school board. What does it say, public comments?
Yes.
None. You have made, you guys spoke of public comments, so did Michelle Monda. You said no public comment. That's false. What I was taking in your minutes is incorrect. But I want to bring more important, I just happen to be perusing this, and at that particular June 25th meeting were all the different collective bargaining agreements, right? And superintendent Valoria's contract, correct? And I alluded the fact that you're going to be ruling on these a little bit later on the day, and that I was going to be objecting to the outrageous salaries that were being proposed. Okay, so I want to bring, at least ten to... So there was that six or seven agenda items, probably about 14 or 15 on the total. We left for 45 minutes, think we could come back, and have plenty of time to still be at the end of the agenda, which is typical for a city council meeting. But apparently, this night, you rushed through the entire agenda. Did you know that for each of the collective bargaining agreement, you know how much public comment was there was? Zero. Know what board comment there was? Zero. You rushed to get it through. The next collective bargaining, how much was board comment? Zero. You didn't even have a discussion regarding the collective bargaining agreement, contracts, and salaries that you were approving. And then you get to Valoria's, the huge increase, way overpaid for her position with four schools and 2,850 students, okay? And guess, guess how many, guess how much board comment was on Valoria's increased three-year contract term salary? Just take a guess. Zero. You're rubber-stamping again. So all these contracts, you're supposed to be doing something here as a board. You're supposed to be doing some work, some analysis, some investigation, asking intelligent questions. Instead, what you're doing is rubber-stamping an agenda all the way through. That tells me each and every one of you should probably be impeached from your positions because you're not doing your job. For you to rubber-stamp each and every one's agreements where that any comment, literally zero comment, tells me you are deficient in your duties. And I'm sorry that Dee was on vacation because I'm pretty sure that she would have stood up and said, hey, let's take a seat and go through these contracts. Is this an appropriate raise? Has he earned that raise? Should it be for three years? Should it be for one year? Should it be mount on top of the previous excessive increases in salaries? You aren't doing your jobs. Dee's being very devoted. I hope she wins.
We don't need to take too many more speakers if you don't follow the rules.
Bylaw.
I need to ask more through the 20-minute mark so we can take the roll and act like we want our public comment.
Yes.
Okay. David Flores.
Well, thank you for allowing me to speak, Ms. Vickers. I really appreciate it. Democracy still works. Thank you, Ms. Vickers.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Vickers. I have a son in the district, as you all know. And my son is going to go ahead, along with many students in this district, lose out on money because of the actions you have taken. You are cheating our kids because you will lose. You will lose in court. You will have to pay not only Miss Perry, but lawyer fees. I wonder who's doing a par to ask how much money this board has spent on lawyer fees? And I'm not talking about special ethic. I'm talking about your bad choices and bad decisions. Dr. Kelly, I voted for you. I regret that vote. You promised that you would go ahead and take a look at the issue of weighted grades. Like a politician, you refuse to do that. Like a politician, you refused to do that. When it came time to vote, I hope you're enjoying the health benefits that you get. I will say again, shame on all of you. When my son loses out on funding, when kids lose out on funding because of your poor choices, I will be back and remind you. Thank you again, Ms. Vickers, for letting me speak.
Those are all the cards that I have. Is there anyone that did not submit a card? Thank you. Thanks.
Do you need a card?
No, I filled one out, I just put my name on it, so I don't know if anybody.
Oh, there was one here without a name?
Yeah, that's mine.
So, okay.
I had attended, excuse me. Um, and thank you all for the opportunity to address you. I was here at, I'm Chrissy Werner and I live here in Laguna. My kids went through the school system from the third grade on and that was ten many years ago. And I've always been proud of our schools and they're excellent. Um, I went to a previous meeting of the board and at the time, I just, I remember feeling the dissension here in the room and mentioned it and was promised that, oh no, that will be worked on and we'll work out our problems. That doesn't seem to have been the case. I know Dee Perry and I know that not only has she raised her own but other kids and she's involved in a lot of children's activities. We work at the museum together, we're, we're docents and we were in the same class together. It's been seven years of pure joy. And she is so enthusiastic and the kids absolutely love her. And it is all about the kids and not about exclusion. But I voted for her and I want my vote to count here in this room. Thank you.
Okay, can you tell, come up and give your name since it didn't put on the card?
Per the Brown Act, you are not required to give the name of her ticket before this body.
So I could find out.
You can be anonymous.
Okay, then just come forward and speak.
I'll be quick. Um, bottom line, a significant majority of us in town elected Dee to the school board. And given that she's worked so many years with special needs kids, as a special needs teacher, and given the fact that from what I hear from people, from knowing her personally, that she actually cares and gives a crap about the people, her constituents, the people she serves, um, listens to their voices and concerns. I think she's more than qualified to be president of the school board and have her turn. Um, basically by excluding her, you're not only silencing her voice, you're trying to shut up the rest of us. It's not appreciative. And last time I checked, you know, we live in a democracy, so all voices matter, all opinions matter. And it's time the rest of you guys took that seriously. And it's long overdue. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that didn't submit a card or does, wants to speak and not give their name?
Um, I'll give my name. Anne Moriell, Laguna Beach. Um, wow, you, um, you really can't make this up situation. I'm reminded of a meeting I was at a while ago when you guys were all excited about some kindness banner program. And I'm wondering where that is now. I had heard, I don't know if this has any truth to it or not, that Dee was overlooked as president because she wouldn't be strong enough to shove through the calendar. I don't know if that's true or not, but I still run into people all the time who are really upset about that still. I know you probably thought that would just go by the wayside, but it didn't. As far as the subcommittee goes, one can only assume that since it's for a year, something's going on for that year, that she needs to be out of the way. That's all I can assume. Because there's no reason to keep her out of stuff. She's one vote, you can easily overrule her in whatever you want to do. But for some reason, since she's the only one that ever communicates with anyone, she needs to be out of the way. Um, as far as the emails go, with the PRA emails, it's really easy to see this long progression of a get Dee out of the way between all of you guys. And, um, it's really shocking, some of the emails that were going back and forth. And not informational, gossipy emails. Really beneath what you guys are supposed to be doing for the students, for the child, for the whole chup, for every child, you know? So, um, it's really disappointing. It's disappointing, it's embarrassing.
It's embarrassing.
You guys were elected and empowered by us, not just a few people, a lot of people. And Dee happens to be the only one I voted for. I don't know her personally, but she's the only one I voted for. Because I didn't like the way you guys had gone before with the calendar. And that was a big thing to me. And I saw that if you weren't gonna listen to parents, when you had less than fifty percent support among parents and students, not good. So, and that seems to be the, the pattern with other things as well. That you're not gonna listen to other people. And you maybe don't care, maybe think you know more. Maybe think you know more about parenting, teaching, I don't know what. So it's, it's very personal when you come and project that kind of attitude. So, and as far as the subcommittee goes, it's, it's unnecessary. And to be spending that kind of money, I mean, completely unnecessary.
Thank you. Any other comments? Say something to make sure that no one feels that they were overlooked. Are there any other public comments on non-agenda items? Okay? Then we'll move on to, uh, reports of, for support bargaining unit reps. We have rep from the, tonight, Sarah.
Um, yes, I have, um, in response to, in response to, uh, the email that was sent out, um, uh, thank you, Dr. Valoria, regarding the resignation of Dr. Odebo. I received, and many of us on the list received many, um, comments about it and they wanted, they were surprised to hear a resignation. And they reached out to us, um, asking us to commend her for her contributions while she was here. Um, and also, some concern was expressed as, you know, teachers, every time we replace somebody in this position, then, um, for the future curriculum and initiatives. And sometimes they don't remember what happened in the past and moving forward in the future. And with all that being said, um, you know, with the high turnover rate of this position, it seems like it's like a three-year position that, um, we get new initiatives and directives and they pile on top of the old and whatnot. And, um, so it would be good if, you know, we continue this process with, and we move forward with, um, you know, the director of curriculum, which I guess that's being, the restructuring may help with understanding what's been done in the past, what projects are in momentum now and what we want to do moving forward. So we're not, teachers aren't given a whole new set of new ideas from a new person. So, um, I think that maybe a lot of those concerns by teachers would be assuaged with this restructuring because obviously many of you who are here know what has been going on. So, um, I was glad to read that in the agenda, but did want to present that on behalf of the Laguna board members.
Thank you. Do you have, um, board members? Kelly.
Mary, please.
Perry?
No report.
Split?
I have no report.
Mary, is this one of my comments as well?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, I just want to. Oh. Thank you. So, um, I just wanted to comment that we haven't had a subcommittee meeting. That Member Perry never nominated herself to be president, not only when she won the debate. So no one knew she wanted to be. Um, that Mark Rizzi's case in San Diego was upheld. Case was dismissed for lack of merit. That all personnel discussions are done in closed session because of personnel. We couldn't discuss Member Perry's potential velocity because she didn't recuse herself this evening. Which, she has conflict, so she needs to recuse herself. And even if she doesn't receive confidential information in the two very narrow areas, she still doesn't vote, she still has her voice. But those things can be discussed and spring technically light funds forward to have a discussion. And that's very important, that they can do that and to think that that information will then be shared out of the public against all of us, that she continues to break.
I have no report. Uh, Laura?
Uh, no reports, ma'am.
Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, President Vickers. Uh, as many of you know, we have lots of summer work going on and a lot of coolness to manage to get up and running with projects. Um, we are on schedule with all of them, thanks for your hard work, putting our fire alarm, HVAC upgrades in California, the home oral roofing replacements and VR renovations. The first available science room is also going really well. We're transforming that all that to a major science room. And as you know, the importance of the greysway and restroom upgrades at the high school, it's a modern project and it's going very well and it'll be during the middle of August. I should, Mr. Jalen, you're up, sir.
I see out there. Thank you, Mary.
The bag is under his eyes.
Thank you. Uh, we now move to consent calendar, uh, items that board members need to pull off. Although we are pulling out all of the equivalent minutes, there are three meeting minutes and we need to approve those separately because Member Perry was on vacation.
I approve, I have asked that all matters on the consent calendar, please be pulled for discussion.
So we'll begin with, um, item A, the minutes. Which is, um, is that coming? We haven't had a press conference tonight, so we've never had the public pool consented.
First, everything, I have a lot of public comment on the agenda, uh, hold on.
Okay, so we will have then, um, public comment on consent.
Okay.
Um, well.
On the consent.
On the consent calendar, that's all I would say.
So I would like, I would like, uh, for, for about the secretary of these minutes to reflect that there was in fact two public comments and I asked that person, where's the secretary, everybody is taking notes here. Who does that? Okay. To ask you to please go back and review the tape because I know that this morning and I both spoke regarding, uh, a number of issues and I asked them to reflect in a minute. I also want these minutes to reflect that each and every item in the agenda of June 25th was passed unanimously without a single board comment. And I want you to reflect that because you guys were in and out of here in about thirty-five, forty minutes. And you're not doing your job if you're in and out of here in thirty-five minutes, rubber stamping each and every item. So please let the record reflect that Jennifer Zider indicated at the June 25th board meeting of this school board, each and every item was approved without a single board member comment.
That's false, I commented.
Well, your minutes apparently are false then, aren't they, Ms. Wolf? So obviously the person taking the minutes is doing a poor job.
Excuse me, Ms. Weber has.
I asked for verification on the part where you and Michelle Mondo commented. Because in the minutes it has that you stated on non-agenda items, where are you stating that?
It says no public comment.
Under what?
Uh, under your agenda here, right here, public comments.
I believe she's referring to.
Public comment, I didn't know on.
Page twelve.
Page twelve. Page eleven, page twelve, at the bottom.
I was looking at page six.
At the bottom, page twelve. Public comment, non-agenda items. Michelle Mondo, Jennifer Zider.
Okay, I'm looking at the June 25th meeting.
This is the June 25th meeting.
Page twelve. Well, Bianca spoke first, you spoke second, Jennifer spoke third.
Okay, that's fair enough, I'll give you that. But I still stand with the fact that you guys pretty much rubber stamped every other agenda item on that, on that agenda. So that's, that's.
My very opinion, this will be another one of this discussion.
We did it on salary.
Yes.
You closed at six thirty-five, six thirty-six P M.
Seven-ten.
Seven-ten.
No, because we were back here at six forty and the, the, uh, the, the entire room was dark. Yes, it was, Ms. Vickers was having snacks back over here. Yes, we walked back in and it was done. Close, everybody here was gone.
Immediate adjournment at seven-ten.
If my question was right, then what was in the audience?
No, in fact, we had one of our principals.
Right, right, Ms. Mondo and I were the only two members in that audience.
We had your cars.
But you can remember stamped everything.
Excuse me. We had your cars and one of our principals went outside to see if he could find you. At that point, we said, we're not going to wait to return.
So you rushed through the entire agenda.
No, we did not.
You did. You did, I can guarantee you did. And I'm not sure if the, uh, the speaker, the recorder was up, but bottom line is, you guys aren't asking the questions.
Do you have other comments on the consent calendar before your time is up?
Let me think about it. I would like to ask this board to actually do your work, which is to ask the tough questions, research the staff reports, not take what is given to you for granted, and do your job. Because you're not doing your job, you're too busy trying to exclude a board member from doing her job. That's it. Very sorry that you guys.
Done in closed session. Hi, conclusions, um, any, any board members want to pull an item off?
No, not pull an item off, but comment.
Comment on the item.
Um, I'd like to comment on the three minutes, the minutes, the three minutes.
Well, you can comment on them when we bring them forward for abortion. Because those have been pulled off.
Those are pulled off.
They have been pulled off because you weren't there.
Okay, pull them off. Yeah, you, you must have stayed and been voting on those. Okay, so available, uh, is there a motion?
No, you know, Ms. Ito, um, President Vickers, um, you know what? As a matter of Brown Act, you have violated my rights because you cannot do a totality which affected the consent items on the agenda. You must go through each and every item. You may not ask me to do a blanket statement. So I think anybody who would like to speak on any of these actions needs to have a voice on those consent items. You cannot do a blanket statement.
We got a legal opinion.
That's in the Brown Act.
Okay, look it up.
Pulling as what?
She can speak to A separately, she can't hear from the rest of us.
Right, I'm gonna sit there. Each and every item.
Okay. So we will have a motion for items other than A, is that correct? We'll make that motion, please.
You can't do that. You need to allow public comment on each and every item in the consent calendar. That is under the Brown, are you denying, uh, Mr. Villarosa? Because I'd like to know, because, right, Valoria, because that seems to be like that is a violation of my rights and a violation of the Brown Act. But I want you to go on record, so keys go on record are permanently that Jordan denied my ability to speak on each and every item that I pulled from the consent calendar. Is that your statement, Mr. Valoria?
Legal opinion we received from counsel was that it would be pulled as one item. This was a question that has come up previously, if the board wishes to do something different, that's her view of the board.
Can you make a motion for B through K? I take full comment on A.
And then A would have a public comment. So you're not, you're not interested in, we can make that choice to do each one separately, although we need, that's not.
No.
We've got legal decision, we don't have to do that as honor. Okay, so a motion for B is okay. So.
A second. Here, I'm thinking, is there a public comment on consent calendar items B through K?
I'd like to speak on each and every item, so we're going to start with B.
You have three minutes and you may speak on items B through K, that's the motion on the floor.
So the motion on the floor, you are going to deny the opportunity to speak on each and every consent item pulled, is that correct? President Vickers?
That's correct, that's correct, all right.
I'd like to go on record that you have now violated, uh, the law under the Brown Act. You have violated my right to due process to speak on each and every item. And we will take it up at a later date. It was an ethical lawsuit, perhaps.
You have three minutes right now to speak to writing on B through K.
I am saying you are limiting me three minutes and I object to your limiting me three minutes. I need to speak on each and every item that was pulled from the consent calendar. That is the law, notwithstanding the bad legal advice you're getting from your legal counsel.
You can speak to the one that we pulled.
I want to speak on each and every one.
The one you pulled, which is A, which you spoke to me.
I already spoke on A. Ms. Vickers, I think on the floor, the motion is that I can speak on B through K. Correct or incorrect, we can each and every one as it comes up and then perhaps.
There coming up is B through K, so your opportunity is to address those, any concerns you have on B through K.
No, I'll, I'll address B. I'll address B. Let me get to that page, just a moment, please. Okay, approval ratification of personal report. I'd like to hear the staff report on this first, please. There's no staff report on this.
Staff recommends the board of education approve ratified the personnel report and direct. Staff recommends the Board of Education approve ratified the personnel report and direct superintendent and authorized the actions requested in the report.
Has each of the council?
That's on page B twenty-one.
B twenty-one, thank you, let me turn to that page. So, personal report. I'd like to understand if there are any new, uh, employees hired, uh, the grounds for termination of any of the employees, whether any employees were given raises, that side of the cost, a little bit of adjustment. Um, any special hires, um, has each of the board members reviewed this personal report? Each individual item to determine whether or not they, that is an accurate report?
That's our responsibility, we come to the meeting prepared, that's ours.
Good, I hope I hear some comments from you on this. Thank you. I'll look forward to your comments as a board as to the individual, uh, items on that, uh, personal report.
So we have a motion on the floor for B through K, any other public comment on items B through K on the consent calendar? Any board questions? We're not, consent calendar items are ultimately not discussed because the information is.
The business of the board.
Excuse me, may I just say, you know, I would like to see love and kindness and stuff getting done and our children be attended to.
I would too.
Yes, and I understand and everybody should have that in their mind, that's our objective.
I would too, because that, that. Should we pattern that? So you would, you would ask us then to pattern what we just heard?
Well, everybody needs to hear, everybody needs to hear.
I'm telling the law. City council, you pull something from city council, they go point one, two, three, four. Sorry, that's city council.
Okay, all, all, all this in favor?
Aye.
I oppose?
No.
No. Um, approval of minutes, July.
Okay, I'm the one that's city council the next one and I'm telling them what you guys did tonight. But you've done, she pulls it and you don't impress them item by item, just like city council does.
You pulled it, we didn't pull. She, that's for A, I pulled it.
A.
I pulled A.
We are on A.
So we're on A.
She pulled.
We don't have, no.
No, she can't pull.
You pulled it.
I pulled it.
You have, you have pulled pull items in, public, public personnel pull items.
Yeah, you got it. We can.
Okay.
So is there some, is there something else that you want to backtrack, that you want to pull? Do you want to pull B?
No.
I won't all of them, President Vickers.
No, I don't want to pull B.
Well, you, this is your, you want to have representation, I'm giving you plenty of opportunity, you will backtrack on that. If you feel that you need to represent these voices, they, that's what they are asking you to do, so.
Out of order!
Do you want?
We're not asking her to represent any voices, she represents all of us, out of order!
I'll get the agenda, please.
Okay. Uh, should we take them in the order that I put here, which is July first, so minutes of July first, special meeting, motion, please?
So.
A second. Is there any comment on the minutes of the July first special meeting? Already got it.
Yes, yes. And I will repeat this for each of the meetings, but when a board member misses a meeting, the minutes reflect by stating that board member is absent. I would request that the same.
It does show that you are absent.
With vacation.
It says vacation.
That's true.
Well, it is true that I was on vacation, that isn't the way it's stated for other board members. And I told you, I put in that time in December, I knew I was going. I asked, they do not have the meeting then, you all disagreed and said you were going to have, have it. I flew back especially for a May thirteenth meeting and only found out when I got back on the weekend that it had been canceled. The May thirteenth meeting, uh, for the superintendent evaluation.
Well, we, this, this, these meetings, Superintendent, we got the email in December.
Right, and I said in November that I have these conflicts.
But I missed superintendent meetings, particularly the July.
Well, particularly to this meeting, this July first meeting was a follow-up meeting to the July twenty-seventh meeting, so it was not calendared before we. But I'm saying, I knew they were on the calendar.
Mother Perry, Mother Perry is asking for just vacation to be taken off of her name, she's, she's absent, we don't have to put the juice on vacation.
That is redundant for other members, we don't say. The reason that, the reason that is delineated here is because of what has been circulating. That it needed to be clear to the public that she was not excluded. So we can change that to say instead of vacation, we say not under exclusion, would that be acceptable?
No.
Doesn't need to be.
I wanted to just say absent.
Are you being like everyone else?
Yeah, like everybody else.
Yes.
Yeah, being in her house once again.
Just like everyone else.
So I have it in its own tune, I asked to have it there because I think it's important for the reps since we are being accused of exclusion. But I don't get it's clear that that is not the reason.
That's inappropriate, I think it's inappropriate.
I think you're not trying to let us know that I missed all these meetings because I was on vacation.
The exclusion is for personnel.
But I also need, I like you down to beforehand and you wouldn't change it.
Well, she's not asking you to just decline it.
Exclusion is for personnel issues and it's very specific, so I don't think putting vacation there needs to be there.
I, yeah, the rules need to apply the same to every board.
In every board.
To every one.
On the board.
What, it, see.
I would just like the board to be participating and not the audience, it's really hard to do the work.
Yeah, you just.
Well, just, just, we would participate.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you have a comment?
I, I, I'm indifferent to whether it's on or not. Do you feel the same way, Jim?
Okay, well, I mean, obviously, there's three of you, so let me take it off.
Um.
My, it, members?
No, this is mine.
That's the text.
On favor of the July first minutes as a motion?
Did, did we take it on?
Did we have a motion?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, in favor?
Oh, aye.
Aye.
You have a motion.
You cannot, you can't vote, you cannot be taken.
Oh, okay.
You say that, I can't vote on what you said in the minutes.
You have to stay.
We already said it.
Stay in the, we didn't.
Okay, motion on the June twenty-seventh special meeting of the Board of Education.
I will give the same request.
Motion?
Oh, some, sorry.
A second.
Any public comment on the June twenty-seventh minutes?
I think I've already spoken my comment on the June twenty-fifth.
Wait, we're the first one, I thought there was more. Sh, Member Perry wants that removed, and I get, I assume I will be a minority. So, um, all those in favor of the minute says amended?
Aye.
Okay. Upstayed? One of the bits, I'm not able to realize. June twenty-fifth, regular meeting, motion, please?
Second.
A second.
So any public comment on the June twenty-fifth minutes?
I've already spoken my public comment, I have to really put into the record.
We're asking the rest of the public to vote.
I'm asked, well, I guess my public comment is, well, I'm sorry.
We have, we have.
If any else about to speak?
Please.
Rest of the public comments.
Uh, okay.
You may not be asked to speak.
Um, so I'd like the record to reflect that you're spending an extraordinarily small amount of time at the board meetings. You have a stack this thick and you're taking an hour, maybe a little less than an hour, to go through this with minimal, minimal board comment, board action, board investigation, board analysis, anything, nothing. So again, just want to reflect that, you know, a whole lot of rubber stamping going on here, so maybe the agenda is pre-approved before you come here and that's a, that's a crime when it comes to the due process. It's a crime when it comes to the democracy of our city, our state, our government.
Any new public comment on the June twenty-fifth minutes? Any vote on it? Vote comment?
I would like the same treatment for the June twenty-fifth minutes.
Correction, it's not a treatment, it's a correction.
Uh. Can we make a motion, I can't remember.
Yes.
Yeah, you have a motion. Any word comments?
Yeah, so all of the personnel negotiations always happens in the closed session. When you break that confidentiality, then you can't be part of that closed session. All of this due process and all of this working with the union, everything, all happens in the closed session, what personnel, on the ground.
I know, that's how you guys cover your asses, I get it.
It's required by law.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
To not talk about people in closed meetings.
Okay.
I get it.
Okay. All this in favor?
Aye.
I oppose?
Abstention.
Stee.
Your information items tonight, our first item, item thirteen, fourth quarter report.
Ah, no, 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 excuse me, excuse me, because I'd like to speak on the other agenda items. I would like to speak on the, uh, the, uh, let's see, what's the travels that you're going to be going on here on agenda item C. Approval of conference workshops, I'd like you to have a discussion on that.
We had a motion on items B through K, you were given a chance to speak on items B through K.
You did not, you did, you did not.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
So you, you denied my ground act rights by, by, by perverting the ability to speak on item A through K.
Yeah.
Yes, we did. And we are moving to item thirteen, fourth quarter report, a beautiful comment.
Well, I would like to go on record and while we are expensing the ground, that this is why you guys are in trouble. And this is why you are being sued because you are failing to follow the law.
Okay.
And you're denying the rights of the city to speak. And I will be reporting this to the city council because what you're doing is definitely a violation of ground act. I'm sorry, totally wrong, you're on order and they need to know. I spoke last week at the city council to let them know what you guys are doing.
We should. No, we should adjourn.
Okay, we'll adjourn. Five minutes, motion, please?
Second.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
To take a bathroom.
We're taking a break. We've got, we made a strike, what else?
Are, are we gonna be, sorry.
Fourth quarter report, uniform complacency, for the way you state it.
Yes, this is our quarterly report on, on latest findings and, and.
You guys were.
Item fourteen, information item discussion, which is regarding retaining the services of AGI Aspen Group and National LLC to direct facilitate a complete parent residence project with the Board of Education. I'm just going to destroy.
Yep.
You all asked that we bring this back to discuss doing any further work with the Aspen Group and it's an information item, so. Public comment first on this item, any public comment on item fourteen? You don't see the one coming forward, so we'll move to board discussion.
I would like to support us moving forward with the contract with the Aspen Group. They have worked with numerous school districts, um, in California and throughout the country. They're a well-known entity, I think we could all benefit as far as by their, uh, their knowledge and their experience. Uh, and I think they could help us as far as with governance issues.
Hi, Greg, Jim? I, I like the idea and I really like the all-day training, I'm concerned about the cost, that's my concern. Um, and I'm concerned about, uh, finding the block of time that all of us can accommodate. And I'm a little concerned about doing this activity during kind of a pending possible lawsuit by a board member. I'm just not sure if it all jells at this right time. Um, I am willing to go attend their October event in San Diego to do like a learning lesson. I, I'm positive and want to do the training and engage and commit to learning and working and being better in our policies and procedures and our protocol. But I just, I don't know why I'm hesitant, I'm hesitant, yeah.
I'm hesitant also, did you have more questions? I'm very hesitant with the cost. Uh, I think we had a good seven hours with them when they came before. Um, but I have concerns that are actually public leaders and the cost of, uh, and that is it is, I don't to plan to do some more work with them, whatever the scope of that might be, but not, not as broad. Uh, mine and the lines with yours, I'm really concerned with the timing. Because at the end of that seven hours, they had various commitments from us as a group. And they spoke specifically, uh, about rebuilding trust and there was a commitment from Member Perry to rebuild, but from specifically, they were addressing her, and I know we have that meeting recorded. And she made, she did commit to that. And what has happened since then is, for me, I think she's headed in another direction. And I think we've taken significant steps backwards from any progress we made in that seven-hour day. So I, right now, the timing until we can resolve what's on the table as far as pending litigation. I think that we, we look to the future and I agree with the October.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be, I was in.
Because I would be interested in going down to San Diego and attending.
We all came that day and we all were very genuine and worked hard on that day and I just think. I would like to say that I, I felt badly and I talked to, at the break, about should I retain a lawyer? That I was thinking about it and I said, it looks like we're all trying to work together, be trustworthy. And that was not the advice I, I got from the trainer. She said, you should listen to a lawyer. So I assumed, I assumed that all of you had talked to her, to the group before and and decided that you were going to go ahead with all of your, um, actions against me. So, I, I mean, I took that seriously, that that was.
They, that was not on the table when we met with them.
No, and I hadn't hired a lawyer then.
Excuse me, no, I'm saying that, that what you just referenced, that they advised one was not on the table.
No, I went and talked to her privately.
Okay, well, then, none of the rest of us knew that.
Well, that wasn't for you, I mean, I just wanted advice from you because I thought things were going well and I said, maybe I shouldn't do this.
It was a, it was a beneficially, um, honest conversation at the seven-hour thing, I mean, we benefited from that.
Yeah.
But whether it altered each person's decision to follow rules, guidelines, confidentiality or whatever, I can't speak. I can only speak for myself, what I garnered from it and learned from it and the commitment. I'm just, for this, I'm just concerned about the cost and I'm concerned about the commitment of time, kind of where we are. So I would like to keep it onto the back burner, this is just my thinking. Um, and then attend their October event in San Diego, which is a more reasonable cost. But you can also see other board members and dialogue with them about their issues that come up, so that could be informing. That's my position. Or another thought is if there's other groups doing governance, uh, that are different or might offer something in a more reasonable, compact kind of training. Because I work, besides doing school board, I have a job, so sometimes it's hard for me to squeeze in all days. Um, so that's just, and I know Jim, you know, Dr. Kelly works and so we're, we want to be available. I'm positive and want to be engaged in these kind of things, but I'm just.
I also brought up to Dr. Gloria the October training and thought that that looked good. Or President Vickers, how do you see us going forward without help?
Well, now you just added a new thing to me that I'm concerned about. You were having a conversation during a break with one of our consultants is to help us to move forward as a unit. And you telling us that she advised you to seek advice from an attorney, she didn't tell me.
Tell me to seek advice from an attorney, she said to listen to advice from an attorney. Maybe we have.
And then I would, now I'm doubting whether I have confidence in that person guiding us as a, as a unified group.
I think right now, right now, with your action against us, I, I, for me, we're stymied at this point until we, until we can resolve that issue. Okay, that's your opinion. It's more than, it's more than my opinion, you heard the statement that I needed to read, that we, at this point, we can't move forward regarding the response to that action until we can meet. Okay.
But we could, could we, those of us who'd like to attend the October event that you and I are both interested in,
Right.
could we file that as like a, um, a conference type thing? Because it is a conference, it's reasonably priced, it's close, you could drive. Um, and then for me, it might just be a learning event to see how other board members function and to learn from their pros, cons, how they function. I would be interested in that, I don't. I mean, that's a good option right now for at least for me, pretty.
I don't think we can go on the way we're going on without professional help.
Right.
No, we can't.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
And I thought that they did an exceptionally good job, the way that they laid out for us what they're going to do for us. How they were going to condense all of these bylaws down to five things, they were going to develop rubrics.
Right.
We would then deal with rubrics at every meeting, that we would evaluate every part of what's going on here. That sounds to me what school boards do, not what we've been doing since I have come onto this floor.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Yes.
It would also help with the agenda, meaning our student base.
When would, when are they available? What's their first availability?
Uh, October, it's what, uh, the email over the weekend, I just queried their availability, it's going to be at the earliest, late September, early October. Obviously, it's challenging at that point with.
Obviously, it's challenging at that point with different meetings and holidays. And, and they, it looks as though they do it over a six to eight week period. And they don't recommend doing back-to-back meetings simply because it's a lot. They do them in kind of spread out sequences. So that would be part of coordination.
I am fully committed to anything. I just don't know if timing was, because of their schedule.
Right.
But I'm fully committed to implementing. I'm concerned about the comment that the comment was not genuinely, I think it was wrong.
There was one piece of advice to us to do that, to break into the meeting. At this point, because of California laws on meetings, we can't do that. So I mean, some of the things may have been, you know, that can't apply to us. So we'll have to have time to go through that out.
Well, I think that's part of the process. I think that'd be part of the process.
I don't think anyone is opposed to working on governance.
So does he save, there's a date that works for everyone?
It's a multiple-day engagement. So you can say phase one, two, and three.
Right.
The contract's full of five days of services excluding their travel expenses. So the, the fifty thousand dollar contract simply now is steam up. And then once entered, the contract would obviously live for those dates. But we can't do one date. We, they want multiple dates, yeah.
They want the full commitment.
The contract's a lot.
And the five separate dates, nine weeks on a Monday and a Tuesday.
If necessary because of scheduling conflicts, they would, they don't recommend it, but they could do two consecutive days, a Monday and a Tuesday, and then come back, you know, four weeks later and do another meeting with the board and then come back. They kind of sketched out a schedule, but of course, the problem is they sketch out a schedule, but they don't factor in our board meetings and holidays. So we'd have to look at that and how it would fall. So that's, ultimately, they'll work with whatever the board's interests are around kind of creating a schedule that works for everybody in terms of travel and business work.
Right.
But, yeah, I mean.
Is October too soon? Should we, with the idea of wanting to get support from really knowledgeable people, should we push it back and wait till after Christmas? Or is that too long for people, the holidays? I, I just am trying to throw out different ideas. Because I, I would support other board members' idea that this is an important investment. I would say that would be the case.
I think that maybe we get sent back to come to find out some different scheduling options.
Okay.
Of where it fits with everybody. Because Victoria has everyone's calendar.
Okay.
And then maybe she could work with them and then come back with us. And if there's a fit, come back with some action items so that we can prove it. If we can find out where it fits, where we can actually make this happen.
Just sort of cursor review, I can tell you more than likely it's gonna be maybe a, a meeting that you could potentially have first week of October. And then beyond that, you won't be able to have another meeting until January.
So should we start, start the whole thing again? Or that, that's not my thinking?
So that, I think that's a probably even recommendation that they would have. I can ask them for that.
Just having family, life, children, work. It just, I don't wanna, I wanna attend everything that's offered, right? Because that's the investment we wanna make.
Correct. So then I would be looking at the calendar then for January and how it would fit. Like, whatever the dates are, I'm not saying what they need. But I just think it's important that we take a step of calendar alignment and bring it back for an action item.
I'm okay with that.
I think that, that cover that might want it.
What do you guys think?
I agree.
So I'll bring back as an action item their contract with dates for probably January. But we'll look to see if there's other dates that they can possibly do.
Maybe you should poll us as far as for the dates.
We are available before you go to them.
You could do that, you know, yeah. Yeah.
Well, I need to figure out what their dates are first, where their, what their thoughts are first
Oh, of course.
before we say, well, here's what ours are, that they're already booked and will be kind of pointless. So we'll find out what, what potential weeks they have that are available.
And then Victoria can doodle us something for you.
Yes.
And then we can all mark on the doodle list. Okay.
Also, if we did, I, I know it's not ideal, but if we did two days in a row, then we're not paying as many travel costs to.
Right, you, the, you're not paying for the flights out, correct? Well, then we'll go with their, of course, their recommendations as well on that too. Because I think it is a lot. They said, yeah, they said it's a lot to go from eight to five, two consecutive days, so.
Yeah.
But if they have to and it fits into the schedule and we have to do that, then that's what we have to do. But maybe not, maybe that's an action of order, so. So what we have to do, that will bring it back as an action. I will, Victoria and I will work with them to get some potential dates and bring it to the August meeting for your review.
I move to action item fifteen, approval declarations being for fully qualified educators for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year.
Thank you. So these items you've actually already approved, they were on the consent agenda at the May twenty eighth meeting, which is our normal process. We submitted it to CTC as we normally do and they kicked it back saying, no, now our process is, it has to be by itself as an action item. So we're bringing these items back to you again tonight for approval as action items.
Any public comment on this item? Any more questions? Motion?
Aye.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Here's five vote. Action item sixteen, approval declarations being for fully qualified educators for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year.
Same item, just for the upcoming school year.
Public comment on this item? Any board questions? Any questions?
It's a move.
Second, Carol. Any discussion?
So this is their new standard. It has to be an action item every time. So now we know.
Correct. So we'll do this one, go.
Okay. Thanks for correcting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Here's five vote. Action item seventeen, approval fourth amendment as a joint powers agreement with college and period manage.
Me. As can be said out in the background, we've been in agreement with Capo Stronine Fight School District for many, many years. And formerly known as ROB, now known as College Career Manage. This MOU simply clarifies some of the roles moving forward. There was some clarification issues that need to be addressed that at a chairman's request of Capo Stronine Fight School District staff related to just the inner workings of the CCA management process. I know that both Mr. Wolf and Professor Vickers were also presented with this information as well. And I'll bring it forward for your approval.
Public comment on this item? Any more questions? Motion?
Seven.
Second. Any discussion?
I would just have board members on page one hundred, P one hundred of the whole agenda. Page four of seven of this agreement. Some of the major changes are aligned in that. That to date, the executive director has been a Capo Stronine employee. And we have not done any goal setting in a sense or evaluations of that person. And that will change with the change in this agreement. And the other is that we are well employees, so that all employees are at will and can be terminated anytime. That's a change. And there is, this really came from Capo Stronine. So they, they appointed the executive director. There was not any board involvement in that, and that will change.
I think that's right.
Yeah.
So they'll no longer appoint? No, this person will stay, but they won't appoint people. Picture of the board.
Right, she's, is it this January or she's standing there?
She's retiring? She's going to be retiring?
Have, say, you know, we'll change the process for that. Where she was appointed by this.
But, but Capo tends to have the more decision-making in this, with three members.
Because they have three.
So, and their superintendent tends to have an OBO are changing.
And that changed with the disagreement with this change again. Before it was always two and two.
Right. Yes, so. And that's just how it functions and that. Ours is a small role in a very large program.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Please. There's a curious five vote. Action item eighteen, approval personnel reimbursement agreement between the Orange County Superintendent of Schools and the Levitt Beach Unified School District to provide audiology services in an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand.
I'll be, I'll be, I'll read your comment. First question. We started using that program in July of two thousand seventeen. We found that this has worked very well to support our students. It, there was a question and I'd write clarification because it is a little bit odd. The point five days per week and up to exceed nineteen days per school to get thirty-eight days at those half-days to support our students. There was also a question, I appreciated that, from Amber Perry related to the testing. And we've been, we will do those in an outside contract as necessary to meet the needs of our students. So we don't have that requirement. I don't think we had any testing last year. We may have one this year that we need tested, but we'll determine that and bring that back if necessary to the board. So you'll see in the contract, the county has a little different benefits package. And if the person is on a PPO, for example, the employee, the benefits cost is high. It'd be up to forty percent of their salary. And that's somewhat is what was reflected in the contract as well. So it is part for the course of that employee's benefits. The portion, percentage that we're paying is the percentage of the benefits that are attached to that salary. So you can see that the benefits package for that employee at a full-time status is early times.
Any public comment on this item? Or questions? Motion or question?
Motion or question? Which one wants it?
Yeah, she has a question.
Okay.
Sorry.
So what are, what are the indirect costs?
She goes, we have an indirect cost explanation. Inirect costs are designed to cover like the utility of building an office that's there. It's a set rate by the county office and it changes each year. But it's common, if we were going to other outside agency, we would apply our indirect cost to that fee as well.
Okay, thank you.
What is our current indirect cost?
That is seven point five in here.
Seven point.
Seven point five percent.
It's very cheap.
I've seen, I've seen lower actually, yeah, actually to have that in certain point situations, but yeah. It's really for the, as, we should make a point on, for the costs that are associated with that employee at the county level. So payroll or associated with that person, all the pieces that are behind this, it's like what happens.
Motion please.
It's a move.
Second. Any discussion?
Thank you, Dr. Valoria, for answering the board questions. I was concerned if they only came nine and a half days that there wouldn't be ongoing therapy for the students. I did see that testing, it was special testing for auditory processing disorders. But is it special testing for other, we hire someone as a special tester for other areas? Just regular audiologist or?
You wanna come up with a, oh, Ari, I'm gonna notice that specific.
Thank you for the opportunity to respond. So our audios, our audiologists do perform standardized assessment for children, obviously, with hearing impairments. And that's included in that amount. The, the specific assessment that would be outside of that is for some who are suspecting solid central auditory processing disorders, mind twister. And the county can provide that assessment. And it may or may not be our audiologist that's assigned to us. It depends on their impact. Some of the audiologists that the county work only part-time. So that's why it may be someone other than the person that's assigned.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, it does make sense. Thank you. And the other ones that can do fine?
Yes, that's part of, yes.
And thank you for the explanation about the benefits. I saw that their face cost was a little over ten thousand and the benefits are almost five thousand. And for somebody that just works a half a day, that seems like a lot. But I guess we're just going by what the county charges.
Right. Any other board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Here's five vote. Action item nineteen, approval resolution number nineteen dash zero four, cooperative grant between the Levitt Beach Unified School District and the Department of Rehabilitation to provide vocational rehabilitation services through a transition partnership project, TPP.
I'll take this one. And again, if there's questions, Ms. White can come to the podium. Again, this is our regular transition partnership program that we enter into with Department Rehab. This is a grant that extends to June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two. It's for approximately two hundred eighty-six thousand dollars and it employs two different, of our employees that work with our students who are transitioning. And to new employees that we actually recently hired, new people who had left us and we have new folks on board. Very happy to be able to have them on board. And we've actually extended the working time of one of those employees to cover the summer. Because a lot of our students are also working in the summer as well. So I appreciate Ms. White and all her work on this grant and as well as the two employees making this happen and for our students.
Any public comment on this item? More questions? Motion please?
It's a move.
Second. Carol, any more discussion?
I just wanna say personally, I just wonder a little bit they're working here in the summer and they jumped right in. Started calling parents and, yeah, great use of resources.
This is a three-year grant? And this is the, is the amount is for three years?
It's been a three years.
Had wonderful benefits from this program and I'm appreciative of that. Ms. White pursues it. It's a great opportunity for our students. And we get a lot of support also from our community in helping to place the students in these positions. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Here's five vote. Action item twenty, approval of job description and position of deputy superintendent, human resources and instructional services. Dr. Valoria.
With the reservation of Dr. Adipo, we took some time to review the potential next steps related to this role. And through much discussion and review, I'm bringing forward your consideration tonight. A new description of a position of deputy superintendent, human resources and instructional services. That will be followed by, if this is approved, a new director of human resources position that will work out of this role. I believe that this is the best interest of the district, the continuity and coherence that we will need. And as Ms. Hopper pointed out, having that knowledge is important for all the instructional shifts that were, that are happening. And to bring somebody in new, I don't believe is in the best interest of the district. This role would be taken on by Ms. Winston. And I have full faith that we will be able to hit the ground running and continue the great work that we've been doing.
So a good public comment on this item? Any more questions?
Yes. I, I asked Dr. Valoria this before, but I would just like to explain how curriculum and instruction is going to be handled when it's halftime. And then it's half, that deputy director, halftime is personnel and human resources and another human resources personnel person. And why do we want a half human, you know, human resources and personnel person and only half a instruction and curriculum person when we're in the business of educating children as a whole?
Right, so the director of human resources position that's on here later will do the bulk of the day-to-day work. So it's just the direct oversight of that employee and the work that they're doing. As you mentioned, you know, we are here for curriculum and instruction and education is a primary focus. So the bulk of the work that Ms. Winston will be working on will be directly with that. Again, she will have oversight of the human resources department. But the curriculum and instruction component will also be clearly an area that she'll be spending a lot of time. They have three directors that work in that area. We have two toes, so we have a very robust group of folks that work in that department. So as such, it is pretty clear she'll be having to spend a significant amount of time in that department. And that is why when my initial inclination was simply to ask Ms. Winston, she would take over both positions, not having a director. And after a view of all of the work that's going on and need to be continued, it was a determination that that was not gonna be feasible. And we need to bring in a director to pick up that day-to-day operation so she could spend more of her time and focus on the CNI side of the house.
Well, I think Ms. Winston is more than competent. I'm excited that she's taking this over. I just wanted it explained. Thank you.
That's my question.
I think it was an excellent idea to bring each other person to relieve Ms. Winston of some of his other responsibilities.
Thank you for the feedback.
Any motion please?
It's a move.
Second, any discussion?
Thank, thank you for spending the time and for reviewing this and analyzing the talent we have. And I think anyone coming under Miss Winston will flourish because of who she is and all the things she set up. And I think on the, on the instructional side, you have all those bonds and part of that work, and you will just jump in and continue to build them. I'm very excited.
Just like we can comment following up on Member Perry's concerns about human resources. I know for many years we have emphasized finding the top-notch quality staff. And so human resources dealing with personnel, it seems like it's kind of disgusting, like it's not that big of a deal. It's a huge deal and it's a huge part of instruction in my mind. And again, I then have to say that would be my opinion, is that it's critical to successful instruction. So I think that any, any time spent there is a direct link for him in my mind.
I agree with that opinion, but I thought the bias though. But you can't have instruction if you don't have employees and you can't keep having employees and having, right, like it goes in.
Yes, I mean, that's, that's been an emphasis.
Yeah.
It's by the best, that we can find.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Here's my vote. Action item twenty-one, approval amended employment contract for deputy superintendent, human resources and instructional services.
As you just approved the last item, so now we have a contract amendment to essentially replace the former titles in Miss Winston's job description with the new title as well as the additional requirements for her role in the instructional side. So that is being, that's reflected in page one sixty-one, that it's a change of position and title.
Public comment? Any more questions?
There's no fiscal cost to this.
There is no fiscal impact.
Motion please.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Congratulations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Here's my vote. Action item twenty-two, approval of job description slash position as director of human resources.
Thank you, I think you all pretty well explained this. But just, just to clarify, so this position includes all of the day-to-day management of human resources functions, including recruitment, selection, all the classification, wage and salary administration, complaint processes and administration of insurance programs. I will still continue to be involved in negotiations and I think that's a really important function where kind of the two departments overlap. This person will do more of the day-to-day, I suppose, kind of.
Public comment on this item? More questions?
Could you guys need more duties?
I could. I want someone to do one duty job.
Motion please.
Second.
Carol, maybe? More discussion?
Fiscal impact?
Actually, there's a savings because we're replacing a assistant superintendent with a director. So there's actually a savings cost associated with that.
Any other more discussion?
I would just say as a, as a general comment, we have a number of directors already in the district who do, in my opinion, exceptional work. And it certainly is to me a quality, high-level position and I don't, you know, just, we have, they're definitely right in there. To me, they're in there in the mix.
Yes, they are.
It's not, they may not sit up here during our meetings, but I know that, I know the volume of the work they do makes everything function.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Here's my vote. Action item twenty-three, approval of job description revisions and reclassification of executive assistant position from confidential to classified management.
Thank you, so this proposed reclassification would reclassify the executive assistant position from confidential to classified management. As you can see from the job description edits here, there's, there's quite a few additions that have been made.
So then you're taken.
Yes, there've been a lot more management and board operation functions that a person in this position has been taking on and it's, it's reflected in a lot of the work that you see day-to-day, certainly as board members. So the proposal, and currently this position is non-exempt, so, which means it's eligible for overtime. So by reclassifying it, there won't be a need to track and maintain overtime. Really that overtime amount is subsumed in the regular salary. As well as a reclassification of the education requirements have now been raised. And of course, we want the position to reflect, even though we may love the person in it, sometimes people have a need to move on and we want to make sure that the position reflects the requirements of the person we've been needing for that position. So as such, the salary has been adjusted accordingly to capture both the overtime pay and the additional duties. And it's in line with two other positions that we have as similar education requirements and duties.
Public comment on this item? Any more questions?
Could you tell me where I could get a degree, bachelor's degree in clerical?
It's probably more in like a, a business management function. I think that would probably copy from where it used to say a combination of those things.
I think you could just try that.
Yeah, that's probably.
It's just like business machines, when I said K L C W, it's on the tender in business machines, you know, which was this.
Yes.
Yes.
Zero, so get a.
The oldest job descriptions I've seen have dictaphones still in it.
Oh.
There's nothing that would clerical, but I just think that there's no bachelor's degrees in it.
I know.
You could strike it. I started like that.
I also wondered who initiated this, how did, how did you start down this?
This actually came from me. One of the conversations I've had with my assistant has been related to the overtime as well as additional duties that she's been asked to take on. So during my annual review, continuous improvement efforts, just looking at all the different job duties and departments, I felt that there's some coming upon me to bring forward this change, brought it forward to Miss Winston to review as well. And spent a lot of time looking at all these increased duties to ensure that the position actually reflected what it is that it's actually been done. And I think that's an important part of what, of what we need to do, so the curve is really up. What we need to do annually to ensure that we're, we even use it for our organization.
We also reviewed similar positions in other districts to look at equivalency of duties and, and pay alignment with the benchmark positions.
I appreciate you doing that.
Motion please?
It's a move.
Second. Carol, any discussion?
I wanted to say I really appreciated the new job description. I felt like, number one, the updating of it, all the additions, I thought were really good. It also helped to me as a board member to know how much I can ask of this person to do this job. And I could be so candid, because there are times when I'm not sure if I overstepped or not and I, so reading this, I was like, ah. So I appreciate that what this person does is reflective in their job description and their salary, commensurate and not to worry about overtime. So I thought this was a great decision.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Here's my vote. Our last item, board member requests for items for meetings and board member requests for information. Any public comment on this item? Kelly.
I'd like an update on we're working at with filming our meetings, how we, you say. And I'd also like, when we do this, is there a way that we can turn off the microphone and if, you know, if someone continues to talk, like during this past half year that I've been here, that they've not spoken to the, the agenda item or things that aren't on the agenda, that we can turn it off so it's not being broadcast to the community. I'm happy to listen to it, but I think it's a way as far as to controlling people using the goodness of the school board.
A bully moment. A bully moment.
Yes, thank you.
We'll be bringing that to you at the next meeting, update. We were still waiting on the finalization of a couple of bids for the audio visual. We had one, we requested that we get a couple more simply to compare costs because it was pretty high. And we just wanted to know that and we'll bring that, two separate items. One is the data related to the feedback received from the community about how they wish to receive information from the board, which I believe will be really worthwhile for the board to be able to hear that as well as then what you'd like us to do related to audio visual, whether this is the proper location for it to be installed, I guess it'd be back from the board so we can move forward accordingly.
I have a couple more.
Sure.
I'm wondering if Jeff could give us a report on our pension obligations, considering that we've raised salaries, et cetera, as far as where we're at, as far as what we're going to owe towards the future and if we should be putting more money into escrow or something as far as to protect the district as far as that expense.
Is there a consensus from the board to write something?
Yes, please.
Then my, my third thing is I, I would like you to officially ask the city manager about the possibility of part-time officers in, in our schools rotated around just for bad things happen and I know we have a one officer, but I think it would be helpful to have a presence of, of a car parked outside of the school with someone rotated on a part-time basis just as an added security as far as one never knows in this day and age what, what can happen.
We'll be meeting with the city manager, the mayor, chief Ferronello and several other staff, myself as well as President Bickers and staff on our end to talk about different options that are city's interest and topics as well. So that, that is the specific topic that's.
And the other program that Newport's implemented was another thing to talk about.
Yes, and we've done some investigation on that and I'll buy that weekly as well.
And I just have a comment, I make a comment now about something someone said. I just wanted to know that we don't get benefits, health benefits as far as serving on the board. We can purchase benefits if, if we want, but I wanted to be clear that it's not a perk that we get for serving on, on the school board. And I'm grateful for anyone who voted for it.
Do you, Number Perry? I wondered if there was an update on one on campus, their educational services for suspended students instead of suspensions. And I think it might deter future, future possible litigation for suspended students. I know there would be a difference, a student that might be suspended here for something would not be suspended for that same thing from your Delmar or would be offered, would be offered this program.
That's forthcoming, we're waiting for Dr. Allman to return.
Oh, okay. Because I know their training starts in August, basically. Okay, thank you.
I have the same thing, I'm just recording at the meetings, I knew that information's coming. And the other thing is I might suggest we ask the SRO to attend our board meetings because there are a few moments tonight where the voices were quite raised and it makes me a little bit nervous. Everyone is free to have their moment to speak, but when there's yelling, I think it was a little over the top for me, so.
Is there a petition on the board for me to investigate that for?
Whether or not I should could attend our meetings.
Or any kind of officer?
There's interesting in, in me as to what the parameters are when there's not compliance with orderliness in the meeting. That it seems that there should be something to remedy that because we, we are not doing that on reverse.
I'll break forward as much as I can.
And I, I think in our bylaws, there is something that you as the chair can, can, in the meeting and we can all.
We can do that and that was, the decision was to take a break to try to cool that off a bit, but it's, it, it's difficult for me to feel that the rest of you are subjected to that onslaught when it is so inappropriate. It's not, I mean, I'm looking, I had a sign that said in the front row, stability now and it's like, that demonstration was the direct opposite of that. So I would be interested in finding out. I know I've asked before for any guidance in how I can, I can get to this compliant with three minutes, so it's. And I know that city council has been dealing with that in their meeting recently, they went to one.
They're very close, please.
They are. But it did not, it did not stop the council.
I, I would be hesitant, I, I don't know how I feel about an officer being here. I don't want it to feel like we don't want to hear from people and, but I do want civility, I don't, I don't know what the end.
I wonder, opportunity to speak, but civility.
Carol.
My topics were clear.
So then it adds for a motion to adjourn. Our next regular meeting is Tuesday, August thirteenth. Carol, word with it. Motion please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?